You're allowed, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to order. With that, in Mr. McGahey's absence, I will ask if Vice Chairman Bradley would do the invocation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, thy heart in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your glory. We thank you for your forgiveness. We pray, Lord, that you be with us as we go through this meeting, or that you would give us the knowledge and the understanding, Lord, to go through this, and that your will be done, that we would do your will, and we would represent your people in the way you see fit. I thank you for this day, and, Lord, as always, I thank you for what you've done and what you're going to do. In Christ I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 1st.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have proclamations and special recognitions. And do we have somebody from Soil and Water here by chance? If you could raise your hand. If you could, come down to the front. I'm going to come down and I'll read the proclamation out. This is a proclamation for Greenville Soil and Water Conservation District. Whereas healthy, fertile soil and clean water is the lifeblood of nutrition and sustenance throughout the world, and soil conservation is a benefit to everyone; and whereas effective conservation practices ensure soil, water, animals, plants, and air can provide a rich standard of living; and whereas our survival and continued production and access to quality food and water depends upon the robust management of diverse natural resources nationwide; and whereas stewardship calls upon every individual to help conserve these precious resources to ensure their prosperity for generations to come; and whereas the Greenville Soil and Water Conservation District is recognized by the South Carolina Association of Conservation Districts as the 2024 Conservation District of the Year for their exemplary leadership in locally-led conservation, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Greenville County Council that the week of April 27th through May 4th, 2025, shall be Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Greenville County in recognition of the importance of stewardship to maintain clean and high-quality soil and water, which protects and preserves the health and well-being of Greenville County and its residents. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And next item on the agenda is another proclamation for National Therapy Animal Day. I will introduce Councilor Long for this one.
Thank you. Are any advocates for pet partners here tonight? I don't think they are. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'll read this proclamation from here. Whereas there are thousands of therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States; and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day; and whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system; and whereas therapy animal teams in the county of Greenville play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond; and whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end-of-life; and whereas these exceptional therapy animals, who partner with human companions, bring comfort and healing to those in need; and whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. Now therefore Greenville County Council does hereby recognize the health benefits provided by therapy animals and does hereby proclaim April 30th, 2025, as National Therapy Animal Day in Greenville County and encourages its citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, I publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. And at a later date, we're going to do a photo op with one of the Pet Partners' animals that advocates for healing in our county. And I just wanted to present this beautiful proclamation and tell Pet Partners how much we appreciate it and tell the animals how much we appreciate them. Thank you.
Councilor Long. All right. Welcome to everybody that's here. We have a packed house, which is always good to see everybody. And I'm sure a lot of you are going to be involved in this next agenda item, which is appearances on current agenda items. And so I will go to Ms. Stone for our first person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker is Ed Paxton. His topics are Item 9A, 11A3, and 11B.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Paxton.
I'm Ed Paxton, mail-in address is One York Circle. I'm speaking first to Item 11A, which has to do with Jacob's Road, and which is being requested that our 20 properties be converted into our 10 properties. This in essence, and by the way, I'm a Ginnit. This in essence will make them more like a cluster house, which, believe it or not, on Item 11D of your agenda tonight, is an item to remove cluster houses from the zoning. Do you want me to talk to the other two now or come back at another time?
By the way, it's got you listed. You get all three. One swoop.
All righty. Speaking now to Item 9A. The proposed 9A ordinance looks to have been created by attorneys. It's conjectural, and it appears to be prepared in an effort to keep mismanagement of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District and County Council from seeing the light of day. And even today struggles to try to hide it. The fact that they have spent millions of dollars on side-loading collection trucks in an effort to get, basically put the cart before the horse as it relates to a solid waste transfer station out on Highway 124. And then they're trying to hide the fact that the proposed construction of this multimillion-dollar reloading facility on 124 is not in the best interest of the Greater Greenville customers. No economic analysis has been performed by any qualified consultant. And lastly, they're trying to cover up the fact that Greater Greenville Sanitation gets its consulting engineering services from equipment salespeople and others with vested interests. Members of council, this proposed matter on 9A today, it should never have come before council again. It's only there because of the stupidity of the commission's members nominated by council and appointed by the governor. Is that three times three?
Yeah, that was three minutes, but I was going to let you finish.
Was that just three? How about them other six?
If I did that, we'd have a whole room full of people that wanted six. So it probably would be a little too much this time, but...
All right. I'll catch you.
You want to finish your thought?
Get you the next time around.
I know you will. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, oh, sorry, Ms. Stone.
Next speaker is Mary McGowan, and her topic is Item 15A, 2025 TAP Grant.
Good evening. My name is Mary McGowan, 12 Berkeley Avenue. I'm here on behalf of BikeWalk Greenville and our partner organizations, as mentioned, Item 15A. And I'm going to keep my comments brief out of respect for the many people who are here tonight for a variety of important causes. It's great to see everybody out here. Our organization advocates for active transportation infrastructure. This is really critical for our community. If we want affordable, safe infrastructure and options for people to get around, that's just critical to quality of life here in Greenville. The number-one complaint that we hear from our community, and we hear from our community often, as I'm sure you do, is that our trails are crowded. This shows how popular our trails are, and they are an integral part of Greenville. We are growing very fast, and we clearly need more of this infrastructure for our children, for our families, and even our pets. The trail project for TAP funding, 15A, would be a small investment on council's part, just 20% of the total project. That 20% will reap huge dividends with economic development and strengthening our community, not to mention reducing traffic by providing alternatives to driving for small trips. We hope that council will support this project and take advantage of the opportunity that has tremendous community support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Stone.
Our next speaker is Joshua Blankenship. His topic is Item 15A, 2025 TAP Grant.
Hello. My name is Joshua Blankenship. I live at 39 Jones Street in the Brandon Mill community, where we've been for the last 13 years. I also serve as the president of the Brandon Mill Community Association, and we are here with the Village Business Association in support of funding 15A, the Textile Crescent Trail project. We understand that Greenville County has many needs, but turning down a federal grant for trails because we have road issues is short-sighted. The local match funds for this project are already earmarked by Parks and Rec for trails and greenways. And with the current and future development and growth that we're experiencing in Brandon and Judson right now, our neighborhoods need more trails and greenways, not more roads. Brandon and Judson Mill are historically under-resourced. We lack necessary infrastructure like consistent sidewalks, safe and publicly accessible green space, street lighting, and connections to the growth that much of Greenville County has enjoyed. The people of Brandon and Judson will benefit from safe, protected trails that connect us to schools, churches, businesses, transportation hubs, nature, and our neighbors. And this will lay the groundwork for future connection to the Swamp Rabbit Trail. So myself and my neighbors mainly walk and bike for transportation. This is exactly the kind of project that we want to see our tax dollars going toward, especially when the TAP grant money will provide nearly a million dollars of free funding. So the Brandon Mill Community Association asks you to vote yes on the motion to have the whole committee consider the grant, and that each council member would consider voting yes to approve the grant and help our neighborhoods connect to the rest of Greenville. For every dollar we spend on this, we get nearly $4 in federal grant money for free. This is the type of fiscally wise project that we elect you to make happen and benefit our community. It's good stewardship of the budget. It's a good benefit for our community, and it's smart politics. Thank you.
Ms. Stone.
Our next speaker is Lauren Conley, and her topic is Item 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
Welcome.
My name is Lauren Conley, and I live in District 21. While campaigning, Councilman McGahey stated that the only way to make your life better is to be involved in what's going on in your community. I agree. There is nothing more important than your community. This is part of why I love public libraries. The Greenville Library provides a multitude of resources and opportunities to the community, many of which don't require a library card to access. Adult programs range from teaching hobbies such as crafting and gardening to lectures from guest speakers on common legal and financial concerns, with mainstays including tax assistance and computer classes. Online resources include basic auto repair, home improvement projects, job training videos, and tools on how to learn coding and languages. There are genealogy tools, local and national newspapers, state park passes, and seeds to grow food and flowers. The library offers printing services and internet access and private rooms to study or hold meetings in. And if you need more in-depth assistance, you can always book a one-on-one meeting with a library employee. And none of this even touches on the classic library experience of checking out a book. The Greenville Library does all of this, even though it is underfunded compared to other South Carolina libraries. Although we are the largest county in South Carolina by population, registered library users, and annual visits, our budget and staffing does not reflect this. Richland County, the second-largest county in the state, has only 79% of our population, but 1.32 times our budget. Spartanburg has only 62% of our population, but 75% of our budget. While this difference can be seen in many ways, the issue that is currently being debated is staffing and wages. GCLS currently employs 278 employees. This means that for every 1,890 people in the county, there is one employee. The vast majority of these positions require at least a bachelor's degree, but the starting pay for those positions averages $1,174 an hour after taxes and required deductions. I am a full-time employee. Every two weeks, I take home $861.69. I have the cheapest health insurance. My retirement contributions are set by the state, and I cannot change my taxes. This gives me a monthly salary of $1,723.38. My set monthly expenses, after being split with a roommate, comes to about $1,561 a month, leaving me with just $160 a month to buy food, clothes, gas, and a tent to save. I am able to do this because I have a roommate and a second job. In order to get a better salary, I'm expected to get a master's degree. But how am I supposed to afford that when I'm already struggling just to survive? I ask you, please approve the original budget and provide much-needed pay increases.
Ms. Stone.
Our next speaker is Arlie Cecil. Topic is 10A2, CZ 2025-015.
Arlie Cecil, 108 Fox Hill Drive in Simpsonville is my current home. With me tonight, I got my wife Tracy, my daughter Kaylee Thrasher, my son-in-law Jonathan Thrasher, my two grandkids, Henry and Noah. And they're here tonight because this affects them, not just me. So I applied to have a piece of property on 279 Hillside Church Road. I think every one of you have received an email, and most of the comments I'm going to make tonight are in that email. So I hope you've had time in your busy schedules to review that. And the ones that did reply to the emails and the phone calls, we thank you. So the first concern we got is the staff declined to approve our application. And one of the statements in that denial was that our piece of property did not meet the definition of rural in the planned Greenville County Comprehensive Plan. However, after reviewing that plan, there's nothing in there that says a single piece of property cannot be under two acres. These would be two lots. That would be 1.7 acres apiece. Cannot be under two acres. It says that the gross density of the area in a rural community cannot be under two acres. So that was the first thing that we noticed. And so based on that, I'm sure there was other factors that were considered in that denial, but those were not stated in the comments that we could actually see. So we disagree with that conclusion. And backing that up, there was a similar application made on January 13th of this year, CZ 2025-004, also in District 26, that was the same type of application we were doing. A person owned this piece of property. They wanted to split part of it off and give to their family members so they would have a place of their own. And in that application, the staff approved that application, which went on to get approval from the Planning Commission and the Planning Development Committee. The staff noted that, I'm trying to find their quote here, so sorry about that. "Staff is of the opinion the requested rezoning to RR1 Rural Residential District is consistent with the South Greenville Area Plan designation of rural preservation, which is defined as areas intended for large lots, single-family development, open space, pasture land, and the preservation of trees and other rural-related land uses." So in our application, they said that ours were not rural. But in this application, can I have just a couple more? 30 seconds, 45 seconds, maybe? They stated that it was rural, but in our application, they stated it wasn't rural. So in this whole area that's owned RR3 in District 26, Hillside Church Road, there's approximately 61 properties along Hillside Church Road. Out of those properties, out of the 61 properties, there are 15 of those properties that do not meet the RR3 zoning code, which means they're less than three acres. And out of that, there's five of them that doesn't even meet RR1 zoning. So we disagree with the staff and the committee's recommendation to deny our application, and these are the reasons why. So in that email, you guys should have all the documentation that has all the quotes, all the statements in there. So if you need anything from us, please let us know. Please support me and my family and approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stone.
The next speaker is Kathy Smith Carpenter, and her topic is also 10A2, CZ 2025-015.
All right. Welcome.
I'm going to be giving up this cane, hopefully, before too long. My name is Kathy Smith Carpenter. I live at 313 Hillside Church Road. And the gentleman that just was up here, he's a very nice man. My sister, we met him. He's a very nice man. But we are zoned RR3. We worked hard tirelessly to make sure that we would be RR3. And as it turned out, we are. If you look at the GIS map, you're going to look and see all the grain. And yes, there's that little red dot that he would like to change. You know as well as I do, if we allow one change, it's going to impact the entire county. It's going to change everything. The gates were kind of left open whenever some of the last members left council. You weren't responsible. But the long and short of it is the pieces of property that this gentleman is talking about, those are grandfathered in. They were like that before the zoning happened. So they were grandfathered in. So there wasn't like, there's that many properties, yes, but that's just the way it was. We, as our citizens, I have a, I've given copies of these signatures of the friends and family members of Hillside Church Road that do not want this to happen. In fact, the very first meeting that I came to, and I gave a copy, you know, to the gentleman. I got home that night, and I had one stuck inside my door with seven names on it that had not even made it to this list. Now, I don't know if you need a copy of this again or if you need to have the zoning committee show you their copies. I know that it was denied, and I greatly appreciate it. We've also mentioned to Mr. Cecil that, yes, we are RR3. Well, there is also three acres, well, a little bit more, three point something acres next door to the property he has purchased, if he would like to purchase that for his daughter and son-in-law and grandkids. So it's just that we've worked too hard. I grew up, I was born on that road. I was born at home. And we are rural, and we want to stay that way. Please, I beg of you. Don't let this happen. Please.
Thank you very much. Did you need to give a copy of that to the clerk? Was there a copy of that that you wanted to submit?
Well, I do have a copy.
If you'd like to give it to her, we can...
There's so many of these floating around. I didn't know if, and it does have the, the one with the last seven attached.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Stone.
Our next speaker is Barbara Wally. Her topic is Item 10D, Animal Control Ordinance.
Welcome.
I'm at 109 Percy Avenue, Greenville. Thank you for hearing me speak today. It's always an honor and a privilege to be able to speak for the voiceless cats and dogs in our county. First, I'd like to give a special thanks to three councilmen. Councilman Steve Shaw, Councilman Frank Farmer, and Councilman Kurt McGahey for helping us with our animal welfare ordinances that we're here to talk about tonight. It's been a solid year and a half of work. And I'll open today explaining why we, in red shirts, the animal paws, are here tonight and why these ordinances need to pass. Many pets in our county are being dumped on the side of busy roads, on country roads, or abandoned on shelter grounds. The luckier unwanted animals are being surrendered to shelters by their owners with months-long wait lists to do so. Many pets overcrowd Facebook rehoming groups with owners unable and unwilling to keep their pets. Some people are surrendering their healthy pets and requesting euthanasia at their vets and shelters. All of us in rescue are bombarded daily with messages from people desperate to offload their pets or the strays that they find on the side of the road. The reality is that the county shelters and the rescue organizations are overflowing with unwanted pets. And there's no quick and easy solution to offload these pets that has the animals' well-being in mind. So the question is, why is this happening? Many people got pets over the pandemic, and they no longer want them or the offspring from these unfixed and unvaccinated animals. Many backyard breeders made a few extra bucks over COVID selling dogs, which also flooded the market. People are breeding their dogs either on purpose or by accident, and then dumping the mothers with the entire litters of puppies on the street and/or at the shelter. In addition, people are buying and selling sick and poorly-kept dogs and cats at the jockey lots and the outdoor flea markets. And apartments don't let people keep their large dogs, and the ones that do charge exorbitant pet fees. And really, there are other heartless humans that are just dumping their pets because they're inconvenient. And the reasons that animals are let down by humanity today are just endless. So then these stray animals that get picked up by Good Samaritans or by animal control sit unidentified in open-admission shelters like Greenville County Animal Care. And the Greenville and Spartanburg Humane Societies are so full that they no longer take stray dogs. And many of these strays are just owner surrenders in disguise. And then the actually stray animals don't have updated or working microchips, and a vast majority of them come without a collar and without an ID tag. And the shelter's achievement of no kill has been obliterated in the last two to three years for large dogs, especially those over 40 pounds. And this is the painful reality that those of us that are in the animal rescue community and those that work at the shelter have to face when they see these poor cats and dogs perish. And we refuse to allow it to go under the radar any longer. Our community needs to do better. Our county needs to do better. And humanity needs to be better. And please, help us be the change that the animals in our county deserve. And please, help us be the change that the animals in our county deserve.
Thank you. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Heather Shaki. Her item is 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
All right, welcome.
I know this is going to be hard to see, but I did bring some graphics. So, hi, my name is Heather Shaki. I live in District 19, and I've been a librarian for 20 years. There's a saying that when you have a question, Google can give you 10,000 answers, but a librarian can give you the right one. Everything I share tonight has been verified through public data and FOIA requests. I'll be happy to provide citations after the meeting. I'm here tonight because most library staff are not paid a living wage. Colleagues are forced to choose between essentials like medicine and heating their homes. Like many working-class people, they're struggling, and the truth is, it's unnecessary. Of our 284 positions, only 21% are salaried librarians. 70% are hourly, and none of them earn a living wage. 34% are part-time with no benefits. Of our full-time hourly staff, 31 start below $1,300 below a living wage. 49 start $970 below a living wage, and another 20 start around $500 below a living wage. All of this for full-time work. A living wage covers just the basics. Imagine being hundreds of dollars short each month. Walmart starts at $15 an hour, and Chick-fil-A starts at 19, both with no educational requirements. Yet, 85% of our hourly jobs paying $14 to $18 an hour require some college experience. Guess what? Nearly two years ago, an independent wage study clearly showed that staff pay was significantly lower than comparable positions in libraries. That disparity has worsened since then. So the appropriate pay levels are well-established. However, the budget the board presented to county council proposes further delays in addressing this inequity. It only commits to possibly maybe implementing half the raises recommended by the wage study, and fails to account for the substantial increase in the cost of living in the last two years. While the board claims they need time to review the study, they had no trouble quickly proposing detailed budget cuts and a .5 mil reduction within one week. I'm asking you to stop squeezing working-class people, quit underpaying library staff, and pass the budget originally proposed by the director on March 11th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stone?
Our next speaker is Shanna Rains. Her topic's Item 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me. My name is Shanna Rains, and I'm the proud resident of the San Souci community, and I am the Information Services Manager at the library. I would like to address the proposed budget cuts to our library system and urge you to request the library board reinstate the original budget as it was presented by the executive director and our accounting manager on March 11th. Our libraries are dynamic essential hubs. In an increasingly digital world, libraries provide personalized assistance, bridging the digital divide for countless residents who would otherwise be left behind. Libraries are vibrant centers for community engagement, fostering connections and enriching lives through programs, from early literacy initiatives like Storytimes that shape young minds, to engaging craft sessions that spark creativity, to our innovative seed library, which empowers patrons to cultivate their own gardens by freely checking out seeds. Our libraries also offer an invaluable gateway to the vast world of online resources, including eBooks and essential databases that support education, job searching, and lifelong learning. As the manager of the South Carolina Room, I can attest the impact of our local history and genealogy collection, connecting residents to their roots, and fostering a deeper understanding of our shared heritage. Moreover, we are expanding services with the construction of the new Blue Ridge branch set to open later this year. To sustain and grow these vital services in our rapidly expanding Greenville County, reducing the budget in the millage is not only counterproductive, but also an obstruction to our county's progress and well-being of its citizens. Critically, the finance committee's decision to slash the proposed costs of living and wage increases for our dedicated library staff is deeply concerning. Out of 284 employees, 200 are hourly, and none of these hourly employees earn a livable wage. A livable wage, defined as the minimum a full-time worker must earn to cover their basic needs, is $22.72 per hour for a single adult with no children in Greenville County. Yet, we have positions within our library that start as low as $10.83 per hour. I witness the daily struggles of these dedicated employees, the impossible choices between repairing a car and putting food on the table, between seeking necessary medical care and paying rent, the need to work additional jobs to make ends meet, the constant stress of living paycheck to paycheck, despite their commitment to serving our community. The proposed raises were not a top-heavy increase. They were a lifeline for the backbone of our library system. The funds to support our library are already allocated by taxpayer dollars. I implore you to champion the original budget and our library system. This is not merely about maintaining the status quo. It is about investing in the future, well-being, and equitable access for every resident of Greenville County. Our libraries and the people who make them thrive deserve your support. Please ask the library board to reconsider their decision to restore the budget as it was initially presented, and please do not cut the millage rate to the library. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Stone?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Nathan Galbraith, and his topic is Item 15A, 2025 TAP Grant.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm speaking in favor of Item 15A. This is the item that deals with a Greenway Trail that will connect the Judson Mill down to Brandon Mill. You previously heard some of the neighborhood citizens speak about how much they want this trail. My name's Nathan Galbraith, and I am the chairman of the board of an organization called UGADA. We are a Greenville County-based nonprofit that exists to be a public-private partnership with governments to help get these trail projects done. So when the citizens reach out, as they have on this project, and say, hey, we see an opportunity for a Greenway Trail, they reach out to county staff, county staff looks into it, they often contact us because we help provide the access and help try to find the funds for these projects. Rarely is there a no-brainer like this project right here. There is a million dollars of federal funds that are sitting down in Columbia with SCDOT in the form of what's called a TAP grant. That's a transportation alternative program. These funds can't be spent on potholes, they can't be spent on stoplights. The only thing they can be spent on are alternative forms of transportation like Greenway Trails. So those funds are available. Our organization, UGADA, worked with the county. The county actually applied for this grant, and we're the only grant applicant currently. So the chances look extremely favorable that we're going to get this grant of a million dollars. The only requirement is that Greenville County match the funds with a four-to-one match, which is one of the best matches that you ever see on a project like this. If the county puts up about $240,000, we get the million dollars from the state, and the project happens. These are not general funds. These funds are already devoted to parks and rec. They're already in the budget, so we're just allocating them for exactly what they're for, recreational trails. I don't need to sell this council on the benefit of trails. We all know there's more than a million users that are out on the swamp rabbit every year. It helps people's mental health, their physical health, it drives economic development. There's numerous benefits of these trails. We just ask council to please put this back on the docket and vote in favor of spending these resources, so we can lever this federal money and build a trail that's going to connect neighborhoods, schools, and these are really underserved neighborhoods as well that really need this trail. Thank you very much.
Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Sarah Erb. Her topic's Item 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Sarah. Thank you for the chance to be here. This is actually my first council meeting that I've ever attended as a 15-year resident here in Greenville County. And I came because I'm here as a resident who deeply values the role of public services in creating a well-connected and equitable community. I'm concerned about the recent proposals to dramatically reallocate and even reduce the funding of our library system, and other public services for that matter. Public services like libraries, parks, and public transpens are not luxuries. They're essential. Libraries are essential, and they serve as hubs, job resource centers, safe spaces for children and students, lifelines for those who don't have internet access, or honestly, who can't even afford books. This isn't just theoretical for my family. My son benefits greatly, he's with me tonight, from our library. He's discovered new interests through our library, developed stronger reading skills, and as a direct result of the public library service. It's been a support system beyond what our schools here in the public county can offer. There are now proposals for allowing the public to maybe opt out of certain taxes for these shared services. Mr. Shaw, I believe, proposed that, or to reduce our library budget by reallocating library funds. Mr. Collins, I believe, proposed that, to meet road needs. This council is presumably filled with smart, creative, and bold people, and so I would hope that this council can find ways to generate new revenue, rather than pulling from public services that are essential to this community. I want to suggest that the council reconsider the idea of reallocating public funds for this library. Instead, find ways in our wide Greene County budget to reallocate and pull from, or to just bring your heads together and come up with some new ideas for some revenue, and not to reduce the little funding libraries already receive in order to improve the roads, which I believe we can all agree do need to be improved. Yes, we all pay into the system, because we all benefit from the system, directly or indirectly. We all want to see the roads improved, but I know that with a budget as large as Greenville County, that there are plenty of other line items to reallocate from, and plenty of creative people on this wonderful council to create new revenue that does not interfere with communities' library or other public services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stone?
Our next speaker is Shane Leonard. His topic is 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
All right. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council. My wife and I moved to Greenville County this last year, and we've had a wonderful experience. I'm here to advocate as well for the original library budget proposal. You've heard from many people already how the workers at the library are not paid a living wage, how we've actually fallen behind relative to other counties in the area in our library resourcing. And what you have not heard yet is how the library staff serves as a welcome to many new people in our community. When I first moved here, one of the very first things that we did, I'm proud to say, is we went to go get our library card, and the people at the library were just incredibly kind. It's truly broken my heart to hear that they cannot afford to pay a living wage. I just implore the board to consider the original proposal, the budget. The amended proposal that's before you today is an unwarranted slash of this budget, which does not address any of the key concerns of our county. For me, libraries are incredibly important. I, as a young child, one of my very first real object lessons in the importance of personal responsibility was checking out my books and managing my own library card, and it was something I took great pride in. I think this is something, as a potential future young parent in this area, I want to be able to pass on to my child as an experience, and it's something that I very proudly would allocate my tax dollars towards. Yeah, it's just an incredible and important essential service that benefits everyone. My wife is a voracious reader. She actually read over 100 books last year, which is incredible, but it's not even actually that out of the ordinary in her group of friends. I think I represent a demographic of young professionals here who are moving because we see a lot of the opportunity, a lot of the ways that the community is investing in public spaces and public resources. I personally love the trail system and many of the other public resources that we invest in, so I implore the council to continue to uphold that ethos, and especially with respect to the library services. Don't let us fall behind. Please, consider the original proposal of the budget, which is not a perfect solution, but is at least not a step in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stone?
Our next speaker is Audrey Pazin. Her topic is Item 11B, Paris Mountain Text Amendment, and 11D, LDR Amendment.
All right, welcome.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? I'm only going to get one topic there, right? Three minutes?
Depends on how fast you talk.
Three minutes, here we go, fast. I'm going to talk about cluster developments. It's Item G. You heard a lot tonight about medically, medicine-assisted therapy for people who have opiate addictions. We want people in their right minds. We don't want to operate under a delusion, right? Well, we have a county-wide delusion, and it's a sickness, and we need to take care of it, because we have a fiction, a predicate fiction, in the context of cluster development. And it's this, that acreage means development potential. And when somebody has acreage, they come with a subdivision submittal, and they want to use every inch of their acreage, as though they really could have potential. We ignore geography in this hallucination that we have. We just look at acreage, and we say, this is how many houses you can build. And by the way, we look at a density range, and we don't look at it as a cap. We look at it as an entitlement. We've got a fiction that everything is developable, and every inch can be developed to the max. And so people are here screaming, and you had great interviewees today for Planning Commission, excellent selections, but you heard them telling you what people are saying. It's too much, the population is too big, and Deborah Manning said it very well, county cats are not city cats. So we're cats, and we like a little extra space. Cluster development is based on a fiction that development potential translate into concrete on the ground. And what you have is a very intensified development in the part of land that can be built on, and we see that in Paris Mountain. And the rest of the land in that subdivision is slope that can be used for nothing, but it can be eroded, and if you want to have a proclamation to treasure soil, you don't want the erosion. So cluster development on Paris Mountain is really bad, but cluster development everywhere skews population to an untoward number for which we don't have infrastructure. You know, it's also a windfall financially for the developer, because they buy that land at a very good price. It's a bargain, because it isn't developable. But they parlay it, it's like a Ponzi scheme. They get to develop every inch because of cluster development. It results in not meaningful space. It results in retention ponds being called open space. There's, life is not served that way. If you read about cluster development and open-space housing, in the Enabling Act state law, it explains that there's supposed to be relationships, neighborhood relationships are supposed to come out of this thing. It's supposed to be conducive to living. Nothing that we're doing in the cluster arena is conducive to living. It's just conducive to making profit, and it's not appropriate anymore. So that's my pitch. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sherri Sutton. Her topic is Item 11D, Paris Mountain Text Amendment.
Hello and welcome. Many faces I've seen, and I'll see you again. Anyway, my name is Sherri Sutton. Do you need my address again, or any of that?
I think you're good. Yeah, you can go ahead and share it if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. I was a little nervous today, so I pulled out something that's very dear to me, a person, a mentor, and it was former Supreme Justice Ginsburg. And she said, speak your voice, even if it shakes. speak your voice, even if it shakes, and speak your voice clearly as best you can, and speak it with the truth that you feel. And I am speaking like that and from my heart. I am totally against this Altamont Inn going up on this sensitive land. I am totally against the destruction and the decimation of our precious, pristine land. And no matter how they dress it up, no matter how the Divine Company dresses it up, or any other developers coming in, and they're waiting in line to come in and do to here, to y'all, and to Paris Mountain and Traveler's Rest, what exactly they've done to Greenville, you know, which was unsustainable growth. And I've lived there. I was born and raised there, unsustainable growth with no infrastructure. So I would like to just read a moment that please do not destroy the environmentally sensitive land and take away the homes of wildlife and all that that entails. For we need everything we have, every insect, every snake, every spider, every tree. Everything has a purpose in this earth. And for me, as a conservationist and a nature lover, please do not destroy the ecosystem and the pristine beauty. The move to approve Altamont Inn serves only the upper-middle class, if there is still a middle class, to the wealthy with no thought of the younger people or the older people, middle-aged or older population, to work, visit, and play in a green space, you know, something similar to Unity Park. The mountain is not a green space. The mountain is a mountain, you know, in all its glory. And it also, I'm concerned about people that may want to work there if it is passed. It does, the bus only goes so far. And with that being said, the bus only goes so far, and it leaves out the kids in Bruton Town and City View and any of us that live under an income to come and visit if we wanted to. No, thank you. I wouldn't lay hands on it. And by that means, I'll also say 20 acres they've already clear cut, 20 of the 40 acres that they're looking for, which I think is an injustice. So I ask the council, do whatever they can.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Katie Skoloff. Her item is 15A, 2025 TAP Grant.
Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I've had a lot of brilliant speakers in front of you tonight, so I'll try and be simple and short. My name is Katie Skoloff, and I am an avid cyclist and trail user, the past chair of the Arts and Public Places Commission for the city of Greenville, a current board member of the Design Review Board for the city of Greenville, the owner of the Flatiron Building in the Village, and I own a cycle bar in downtown Greenville. And most importantly, for today's cause, I'm the chair of the Village Business Association in West Greenville. I represent over 85 businesses today, and I'm sharing their voice with you to let you know that we are currently undergoing massive growth phase in the village with construction that will dominate Pendleton Street for the next two to three years at a minimum. We are excited about the growth, but in the meantime, we have a hard time accessing our businesses because of the lack of parking. Traffic is already backed up, and this will provide alternate transportation for our many residents and business workers while reducing the need for parking, of which we have a great shortage, as I already mentioned. The trail will also connect the many homes in the neighborhood to the GreenLink bus routes, which are underutilized because the community has a hard time accessing the stops. We have all seen the benefits of the Swamp Rabbit Trail as it's brought to our community, economy, and health and wellness. And the Brandon and West Greenville residential and business communities will benefit from this development and the prosperity that the trail will bring by connecting Judson Mill, Hollis Academy, and all of the residents in these neighborhoods to the heart of the village. Please vote yes on the motion to help us receive the grant that will connect our businesses to its surrounding community with safe and smart investment like this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Monique Hackett, and her item is 11C, Greenville County Library Budget.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I don't work for the library system. I'm going off of personal experience. I've been someone who's visited the library ever since I was 12 years old, and I was running from some, something, something very serious happening in my life. I could escape by going to the library. I could read a book. And with that, I became a very great, a good writer, and I was able to go to college. And from that, I used the library to go to college. But just recently, we had a storm to come in to Greenville, and the only place that was open was the library. So for me, the library has always been a way for me to get away, escape, and also raise my daughter, raise my nieces, and just show them the benefit of reading, studying, picking up a video, learning, having someone assist them with their resumes, and just things that everyday people really need. I know that not making a living wage definitely matters because Greenville is only getting higher. It's not getting any cheaper to live in Greenville. So hopefully, you guys will listen to these guys and definitely give them what they deserve because they really do work hard for it, and they deserve it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda we have is public hearings. A, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 78, Establishment of a Firearms Sign Policy for Greenville County Properties or Facilities. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding ordinance establishing a Greenville County policy directing all Greenville County administrators and staff regarding signs, posters, bulletin boards, memorandum, and/or administrative policies or directives regarding firearms on Greenville County properties or facilities.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Ms. Stone, do we have anybody in favor or opposition?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Andrew Talkish, in opposition.
All right. Welcome, sir.
Hey, my name's Andrew Talkish. I work for the County Solid Waste Division, chairman and council. Thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, we have a challenge between balancing our regulatory compliance, giving our customers who visit us about 1.7 million times a year the best possible customer service, and keeping our employees safe. Asking customers to comply with our rules can sometimes ignite intimidating arguments. As a member of the management team, we worry about a lot of things, meeting revenue projections, construction schedules, and here recently, managing 117,000 cubic yards of ground hurricane debris. But what keeps me up tonight is the safety of our people. This is an inherently dangerous industry we work in, and safety training is on the top of our priority list, and that does include how to deal with unruly customers. Tonight, some of our operators have joined us, and I'd like to ask that you guys stand up if you've ever experienced a situation at work where you felt threatened with a weapon or something else that could bring you physical harm. So most of these men here have been threatened with knives on the job. Councilors, on behalf of your convenience center operators, they're asking for one thing, to hang a safety sign, like one of the many safety features this building provides you and the people who come here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move to Item B, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions. Counselor Bradley.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding the ordinance to amend the Greenville County Stormwater Management Ordinance to implement requirements and proceeds in compliance with the federal and state regulations pursuant to the county MPD and S permits.
Thank you. Ms. Stone, do we have anybody in favor or opposition?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradley, we have no one signed up for this public hearing.
I guess I should have closed the first one, too, so I'll consider both of these closed. Move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it. Next, we'll move along to resolutions. A, resolution supporting the Greater Greenville Sanitation District. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption of the resolution of the Greenville County, South Carolina, expressing its support for the Greater Greenville Sanitation District and concerns over legislation proposed in the South Carolina General Assembly, which, if enacted, modifies its powers in a manner that would have a negative impact on the district's finance and ability to operate efficiently, and which would have a disproportionate negative impact on the most financially distressed area of our district and residents and business therein, and which would result in termination of existing waste collecting services to residents and businesses in the area outside the district, and which may result in termination of existing waste collecting services to thousands of residents and businesses inside the district and other matters related thereto.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Fant.
Chairman, Representative Burns called this afternoon about real plot and asked, well, reassured us obviously, he's doing well with the Greater Greenville Sanitation negotiations, that the Senate was dealing with the budget last week, the House was on furlough, but asked that we give them two weeks to finish up, but did want to assure everyone that Greater Greenville Sanitation will continue to exist or be no switch into a flat fee versus new. So every way we know it exists today, with the way where it continues, with the small item that we're trying to work out regarding constellations and that kind of thing, but all the major items will stay in place. So in the spirit of cooperation, I mean, you and Mr. Shaw, I said I was interested in asking, me and Mr. Shaw in the same sense, but I did ask him, I did mention to him earlier that we were asking to hold it. But I would ask, in the spirit of cooperation, that we hold this for two weeks since they are working in good faith and all the major concerns. Everybody, I'm saying.
Okay. I'll just say that I can probably handle doing that at least one more time. I'll say it like strikes. After the next one, I'll probably pull the trigger myself, but that's.
I agree. You and I spoke about that. This is the last hold. So either they have it together within two weeks, and we just break the pattern.
All right. Any other discussion? Everybody understand the motion from Dr. Fant to hold the item for two weeks? All right. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ayes have it. We will move on to Item B, Abandoned Textile Mill Site Certification, 1533 Buncombe Road. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Abandoned textile mill site certification at 1533 Buncombe Road. A resolution to provide certification as provided by Section 126560 of the South Carolina Textiles Mill Community Revitalization Act, South Carolina Code, Section 126510, for that certain property known as the Old Cotton Warehouse located at 1535 Buncombe Road, Greenville, South Carolina. Mr. Chair, just for clarification, this is just a certification that these mills qualify for the state accreditation and funding. Okay, so, yes, sir.
All right. Do we need a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Opposed. The ayes have it. We will now move to ordinances at second reading. We'll go with CZ 2025-014. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located on Agnew Road and Richards Avenue requesting rezoning from R-MHP to R-M8. The planning commission recommended approval, and the planning committee recommended denial. At the request of the applicant, I move to hold this item until the applicant time to work with the county and the community to satisfy their concerns.
Okay. Just if I can clarify, this is my district. The applicant just said that he's still working with staff on some potential things that might need to change before they move forward, so that's the reason for the hold. So any more discussion on the item? All in favor of holding this item? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. We'll move on to CZ 2025-015. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 279 Hillside Church Road requesting rezoning from R-R3 to R-R1. The planning commission and committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at the second reading.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
Actually, could you say that again? The motion is to deny it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion to deny? Please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Move to CZ 2025-016. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 847 Fairview Road and Wilson Bridge Road requiring rezoning from RS to R10. The planning commission and the committee recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move to the approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. CZ 2025-017. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 4607 and 4615 O Spartanburg Road requesting rezoning from POD to R-MA. The planning commission and committee recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move to approval of this ordinance at second reading.
All right. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Move to CZ 2025-018. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located on O Peller Road requesting rezoning from I-1 to RS. The planning commission recommended approval, and the committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at second reading.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor of denial? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. CZ 2025-019. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 110 Stallings Road requiring rezoning from RS to R12. The planning commission and the committee recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Next, we'll go to Item B, Establishment of a Firearms Sign Policy for Greenville.
That one won.
Oh, did I miss one?
Yes.
Sorry. Got excited.
That's a good one, too. Twenty.
Oh, I marked it off early, sorry. CZ 2025-020. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 358 South Harrison Bridge Road, the new Harrison Bridge Road, requesting rezoning from RS to AG. The planning commission and the committee recommend approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. That's one of my favorite ones on the list, too, so I can't believe I missed it. All right, we'll move on to Item B, Establishment of a Firearms Sign Policy for Greenville County Properties or Facilities. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 10B, Establishment of a Firearms Sign Policy for Greenville County Properties or Facilities. Make a motion that I move for approval at the second reading of an ordinance establishing a Greenville County policy directing all Greenville County administrators and staff regarding signs, posters, bulletin boards, memorandum, and/or administrative policies or directives regarding firearms on Greenville County properties or facilities.
Any discussion on the item?
Did Mr. Chairman want to make a motion to amend it? Oh, thank you. In deep coordination with our county attorney, there was a couple of words added. First of all, oh, actually, the clerk has copies of this, if she would please pass it out. In Section 1, it adds just the words related to firearms, just so there's no confusion about saying that no signs can be, you know, the county attorney. no signs can be, you know, the county attorney thought that making sure, doubly sure that it was just pertaining to firearms. Then you'll see the other red part was added. I agreed with this, adding this. However, this has to do with a state law exemption. If there's a parade or a gathering or something like that, a local government can issue a permit with that and then put up the appropriate signs. Well, we don't issue permits for that, but I'm willing to put that in anyway in case in the future we have parades or permits for other type of outdoor gathering. Those would be the appropriate outdoor signs. And then the last thing pertaining to Section 3, and I'll summarize these again before we vote on it, but it would be removing Section 3, the violation part, because that can be better addressed in the employee policy that we have regarding our employee, what you can, code of conduct. So anyway, summarizing, I would amend it as seen in red with the addition of taking out violation, Section 3 violation. I would remove that. So I would ask that we would approve this amendment.
Okay, just to clarify, we're basically saying everything in red as well as a strike completely of Section 3?
Correct, because Section 3 is just problematic with, as far as assigning a penalty that it would be cause for termination, or that's just problematic. So let's just pull it out. We can address it in employee, it would address any concerns about us doing something ultra varies. So as far as our employees.
All right. Counsel Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question for the attorney. Does this address all the concerns that we brought up two weeks ago when this item came up for consideration?
It does, in fact, address them.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Dr. Fant.
Ms. Chairman, I am opposed to this. We have had staff who work at these convenience centers, and as the gentleman said, it can be somewhat hostile because people bring your pickup trucks, they try to bring too much stuff, they try to dump the wrong stuff in the wrong place, and you have county employees that are there trying to mitigate that, trying to manage the crap, don't bring too much, don't put stuff in the wrong place. And the last thing, and it is quite confrontational, and the last thing we want our county employees to do is to be faced with somebody with a side piece on them while they're trying to direct them where to put stuff. So my question is, are we more concerned with people of the public being able to play gun smoke versus protecting the safety of county employees who are responsible? So I would be opposing.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fant.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Foreman.
So as I understand it, and this is probably a question for Mr. Shaw, with this proposed ordinance where we're standardizing everything, it's going to be the exact sign that is going to be allowed at this facility where it says there's no concealable weapons allowed and it's got a picture of a 1911 with a big old cross through it, right? So that's going to be like where they, where they're working? Like, they're going to be able to like have that, like hanging outside, correct?
Partially. The law is in South Carolina, which we have no authority to mess with, and employees have no, respectfully, they have no claim to not follow the law. I mean, you've got to follow the law. This is the law of South Carolina. The South Carolina Attorney General Allen Wilson has specifically addressed this. I could mention the opinion. Counties can put one sign, this specific sign, on buildings. They can respect, restrict, which they have at these convenience centers. If the employees feel threatened, run into the building if you think a sign's going to help. Number two, call the police. Those are crimes you're talking about. Somebody assaulting you, somebody having a firearm in their hand, that is a crime that they're going to put somebody in jail for, for a long time. That's called presenting. That's called assault, aggravated assault. So what we're talking about here is law-abiding citizens. We've got no, law-abiding citizens who, for the most part, 99.9 of them are carrying these firearms concealed legally. They're allowed to be in any public space other than buildings, and they are the safest, most trained, most conscientious people I know, and they're allowed to do this. And the most dangerous time of a firearm is when you're touching it. So these signs are telling people, they're confusing them to say, oh, I probably have this in some kind of pocket or concealment or holster concealed. I've got to touch that gun now and move it somewhere in my vehicle, which is not the law, and it's just not safe. And unfortunately, there's nothing special about convenience centers as far as public safety. The worst I've seen is at boat docks or boat ramps. I mean, you'll see more arguments aired anywhere, you know. So we can't single out one particular place. There's not any more rage going on at these things. And if there is, just get their tag and call the police. Let them go. Let them dump their pickup truck full of stuff and just call the police. Respectfully, again, I understand the job's not easy, and I love my convenience center over there. It's very clean, it's very handy, and I use it all the time, and other people do. I didn't, firearms are something you can get people fired up, and we could get a lot of people in Greenville County to come out here. I specifically didn't do that, just keep this to the facts, which is, this is the law. I'm just asking Greenville County to follow the law.
I think, I think what I was getting at was it's more comforting that the sign itself says no concealable weapons allowed and that does not specifically regulate to firearms since these guys are the ones that have knives pulled on them. So like, as I stated earlier, that was just kind of my point. And my thing was, look, if it's like right at like the gate entrance of the convenience center, I think that's, you know, I think that addresses their concerns.
Well, again, this is very specific law. It's with attorney opinion, attorney general opinion backing it up. Public bodies like Greenville County can put this, one particular specified in the statute sign, at the entrance of buildings like this. We're in a building. You can't put any other sign up, and you can't put it anywhere else. You can't put it at the entrance to the gate. That's not, it's specifically in there. Open fields, gates, parking lots, parking garages, those are all exempted from this. You can, we can prevent people, we can notify people. This isn't even preventing. This is telling people it's against the law to carry a concealed weapon into one of our buildings. By the way, with the open carry law, that applies to open carry also, but you can't regulate it anywhere else. That's just a straight law.
Counsel Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. The first is, what do our current signs say?
Okay.
From Mr. Cornell, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we do have some, just some courtesy signs out at our convenience center, and they say, please leave all weapons in your vehicle while on the property. It's basically suggestion only. If this is the case that we need to do the whole sign like Mr. Shaw is recommending, I would request that the council go ahead and outlaw all guns on county property across the county, because we do have some concerns you've heard, and they are in buildings at the convenience center. That's a building.
Yeah.
They back into a building at the convenience center. So it's a hostile situation at times when people have had to wait in line to dump the different things, and sometimes they're rejected, and it's very intimidating to the employees when someone is carrying a weapon. You know, that's just the way it is. You've heard some have been threatened. So I would respectfully request that we look out for our employees first and foremost. We're not, we are not, we are not allowing people to get the service from the county that we're trying to provide. We're just trying to do it in a safe, safe manner. And I'd be concerned, too, as Mr. Shaw said, it's the handling of weapons where the problem occurs. Well, when people carry weapons and they handle them, other people, innocent people could be harmed by that. It's just, it's just a matter of keeping your weapons in a secure environment.
Thank you. Yeah, just one more. So my second question relates to the Amendment C. And so I appreciate, Mr. Shaw, the, if we talk about restricting when the county issues a permit, but it's almost like this section kind of counter dicks itself because if you're saying that we don't currently issue permits, we say if the permit's not applied, so it's almost like this section maybe doesn't even apply anyway. So I don't know. I'm.
Well.
You know, I don't know if that makes sense, but it just sort of seems like.
And thank you for that. It's, I'd rather not have it in there. So let's take it out. It's there as an extra, I was almost like throwing that in there in case we ever start permitting all those things, but take it out. Yeah, absolutely. Going back to Mr. Cornell's point, first, I want to make it absolutely clear that, and it's happened in other things, too, other of our meetings, that it's not employees versus the public. I appreciate employees as much as I appreciate the public, and I never want it to be an us against them. I'm not against you. The public's not against you, and I don't think you're against us. This is about, first of all, the law. This is what the law is. We can't change what the law is. This, again, is the only sign that a government can put up, and they can only put it at the entrance of buildings. I've been out to this convenience center. A lot of times, I've never had to go into the building. Even if you want to throw a bag of garbage away, you just throw it in the thing from the, from outside the building. So again, this isn't about, and it can never be that the Second Amendment and state law is subject to the feelings of how a certain employee feels in a certain area. If it's a security concern, then we need to put a deputy there authorized to deal with this stuff. Let's increase the deputy budget. I'll throw it in the budget this year. If we, we got problems at these places, but this can happen anywhere. I mean, it can happen road rage, it can happen at Publix, and the people carrying are carrying for a very specific reason. One, because they're allowed to, and two, because they feel safer with a self-defense firearm on them.
And I just want to make this, I want to make this statement just so I can verify this. The picture that we're looking at here, this is not what's posted currently, correct?
Correct.
Because my concern, obviously, I am pro-Second Amendment. My problem is that the gun with the circle around it on here almost is misleading to the conversation because the sign itself says weapons, and so there are other weapons outside of guns that could be considered dangerous that we might want to protect our employees from. So I'm not saying that I'm, I'm pro, you know, taking all the signs down or up. It's just that I want to make sure we're focusing clearly on what we're talking about rather than it seemingly going towards a gun issue and it's weapons.
Understand, but weapon is defined in state law, and firearm is a weapon. So by putting this sign up, you are including firearms in that. First of all, I, you know, again, asking somebody politely to keep their weapons in the car, is that really going to stop somebody who really wants to hurt somebody? So the whole sign to begin with, first of all, it used to have the illegal sign up there. It's, if you look, it's, that's been taken down because they had the outside sign. So somewhere along the line, it was figured out, well, we need to take that sign down. So what was left there was just thank you, please, all that. And if I need to bring people in to tell you that, they interpret that as the southern way of saying, don't do it. You know, please don't do it. Why do we have anything about any firearms? And that's the only place we do it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Antley, just clarify some state law for us, just as the county attorney.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Mr. Shaw's correct with regard to signage in the state law with regard to signs that command a prohibition. I think the county's point, and when we reviewed these signs, is that they weren't commands, they weren't prohibitions, they were a request. I know that Mr. Shaw has a different view of that in the way that's worded is he just said, but that was the intent, and that's what they were viewed as. They're not prohibitions, and that's what state law does. Not that state law would necessarily, although there's some debate about what facilities, what is a facility and what isn't, but I'm not even thinking that. I'm just saying in general, generally, with regard to the particular sign that we're talking about at the convenience centers with them not being prohibitions. And again, Mr. Shaw disagrees, and the lawyers often have a different interpretation of what those things, but our view whenever, you know, back when it first came up, because this isn't the first time this issue's been discussed, that was, that was the county attorney's view at the time, and it remains that, that it's not a prohibition, so it's not in violation of state law. And that's our view of it.
And I would add, I would add, if I can, I hate to dominate the conversation here, but let's go back to the law, what it says. No governing body of any county, municipality, or other political subdivision in the state may enact or promulgate or attempt to regulate the possession of carrying. Isn't that an attempt? You told us what it was for. We've got testimony of why that is there. That is an attempt to regulate firearms there.
Dr. Fant.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It just seems like, and I, great question, Ms. Seaman, because I wanted, if it's a suggestion or recommendation, that would keep us in violation of state law. Number two, I still think we ought to put the safety and welfare of county employees over somebody just wanting to carry a gun. My question, can you, my note, Shaw, can we not consider erring on the side of safety? I can only imagine, I know you probably don't agree, but I can just see a Saturday afternoon where somebody's been in their T just a little too long, and they go to the convenience center, and then you got a problem that could have been avoided just by even having a suggestion that you really shouldn't have a weapon when you're at the convenience center. I just, I just think it's a slap in the face to our employees when you say we care more about making the company happy by carrying weapons than particularly not weapons.
Yeah. I guess that, thank you, Dr. Fant. I appreciate the argument, but that is the fundamental difference between pro-Second Amendment and anti-Second Amendment. That's the fundamental difference. Yes, if you, the people carrying, which I, I mean, the people carrying are not carrying to harm people. Okay. The people, most of the time, people are carrying all day long, and they don't even know they're carrying. They forget about it.
Dr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a friendly question?
Sure.
Would you, would you entertain this, and I've asked all my colleagues, too, but I just think, because I do feel like this is getting conflated with Second Amendment rights versus a weapons thing, which to me is a whole different dynamic of what it's talking about. But would it not be the best idea to potentially seek, just even if we do outside legal counsel, to see if our signs, the way they are, are considered subjective or if they violate state law, and then revisit that before we pass the ordinance?
I appreciate the question, Chairman. The only thing we can get in that instance is an Attorney General opinion, and that is just an Attorney General opinion, and we're just going to wait and wait, wait and get another one of those. I'd ask all y'all to look at this, look at the Attorney General opinion, and there, this is where the Second Amendment hits. This is where the right to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed by the government.
Is it covered in public?
It is. I mean, I'm sorry, this is where it works. This is why the latest cases, United States Supreme Court in Bruin, said that everybody, every law-abiding citizen has a right to carry in public for self-defense. We have a United States Supreme Court. So all this stuff about the, because somebody's carrying, they're going to shoot somebody. First of all, that can happen anywhere. Thankfully, it doesn't. The people, we have a law, it's very settled law. We have no need for walking any kind of balance act with it. There's nothing different. And why don't we put that sign everywhere, then? Why don't we put it in the parking garage? Why don't we put it up there at the Veterans Memorial out there? I just ask for a vote. First of all, I'll I just ask for a vote, first of all, on the amendment, can we vote on the amendment? And then I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Collins?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. You know, and, and I appreciate what you say, I think it may have been getting out of a little control, but it just comes back to the basic statute that says a 12-by-8 sign will be posted, okay? And that's always asking. He's not asking who's carrying what, or who's doing what, or whose intention. You know, every day I get in a car, I get drive, that's a risk. I went to church Sunday, the guy in front of me had a 22 on his sign. I didn't pray harder, you know what I mean? So it's just a right, they're saying you're in a right-to-work state, okay? So when are we, as a legislative body, that has no control over the statute of the state? If that's the case, why do you want your trail? Why do you want your library? But now you want to take away someone's right to carry a gun, it's passed by law? So where's their right for all you here for others' rights? Do you understand that? It's very simple, sixth grade, okay? So, and that's all we're saying, he just said post a sign. So when you start being the legislative, or we start legislating the legislators, whose right are we taking away to satisfy our own feelings? Rights aren't here for your feelings, they're here to be taken for everyone, regardless of your feelings to those rights. And that's all I have to say.
The, the last thing I will say, thank you, thank you for, thank you for the conversation.
Dr. Shaw, if I can, let me get a couple, there's a couple of other questions, I want to make sure, instead of us going back and forth, but I will give it back to you in just a moment.
You can call Alan first, because he has.
Counselor Mitchell.
I'm happy to go.
This is a question from Mr. Shaw. Was there something in particular that prompted you to submit this resolution, this ordinance?
Yeah, the, the, first of all, this has been going on in counties all, all across the state, the, very progressive counties in the, in the state were, were putting up signs more obnoxiously than this. They were thumbing their nose at the law, they were thumbing their nose at the legislature, they were thumbing their nose at the Attorney General. The Attorney General had to sue those other counties. Some of the counties up here tried to do similar things, and they smart before they did, they didn't thunder it all, thumb their nose to the law, but they did take the signs down. This is, that, that's where that whole backdrop starts. This is, I'm going out to the convenience center, other people, my constituents are telling me they're going out to convenience center, and they're going, hey, what's up with these signs out there? Does that mean we're not allowed to carry? We are allowed to carry, why are they putting those up there? It created confusion first, that's the main thing I'm getting at here, is that sign creates confusion, because most of the, all the people I know that carry guns know the law. They know it way more than any of us up here, and they know what they can and can't do, so they see something like that, and then they're confused, what do I do? They want to follow the law. And so we're putting this undue burden on them that's illegal, and that by us, in my opinion, if you vote against this, and I hate to just get raw political here, but it is an anti-Second Amendment vote. Because of that, I've, I hope I explained it well, but the, the current United States Supreme Court, the South Carolina Supreme Court, says that every individual law-abiding has the right to carry a law, a firearm for self-defense anywhere they legally can, outside the home. And it's, it's, to me, it's very clear what the law is here, I'm just asking you to follow it.
Counselor Seaman.
That's an employee policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Antley, and maybe this, I think, and maybe Mr. Cornell, this is what you're getting to about the convenience center not having doors. So Section 2331-235 says, if the premises where concealable weapons are prohibited does not have doors, and the signs contained in subsection A must be 36 inches wide by 48 inches tall inside. So seemingly, there is room in the statute for us to have signs at the convenience center, according to the law in that particular section. I just, so, I, I don't know, I would either say, let's refer this to the Roads Infrastructure and Public Works Committee, because it's, we're dealing with county buildings, and that committee has purview over that, and, and try to come to consensus, or, you know, I don't know, I, I feel like we're at odds here, and I, we certainly, I don't know, I just might make that as an option.
Counselor Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, I've listened to a lot of this tonight, and Dr. Phan and Counselor Seaman have expressed my feelings very much tonight, and I'm not going to prolong this. But to me, this whole thing, it just doesn't seem like it's necessary. It seems like we're creating a problem so that we can try to solve a problem. And for those reasons that have already been stated by, by my counselors, and the way this is written, I don't see it necessary, and I want me supporting it.
All right, so would you like us to move forward with?
I, first move forward with the amendment, please.
Amendment, all right. Mr. Attorney?
I understand there's two motions on the floor, and I know that Mr. Shaw's was first, but according to y'all's rules, a motion to refer on the floor has to be dealt with before a motion to amend in order.
Okay. Roll call. Roll call.
Who are we referring it to?
Roads Infrastructure and Public Works.
All right, what are we doing about the Attorney General's opinion? We skipping that?
I think if it goes to committee, it would be a perfect place to get an Attorney General's opinion on the, especially on the, what does the no door issue mean?
I'll, I'll point out that y'all don't have to make a mo, I'm your employee, you can just tell me to go get that, and I can go get it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I was just saying that y'all don't need to make a motion to, I mean, you could do it if you want, but I'm y'all's employee, and if y'all wanted Attorney General's opinion, you struck me to get it, then I'd be in support, and if I didn't, so.
Yes, the motion is to refer it back to Roads Infrastructure and Public Works.
I, for debate for that, I would, I would, this has already gone through public safety.
I appreciate that, but I think the conversation we've had tonight and clarification on really state law, and that committee has purview of our facilities, and this is a sign issue, so that would be my request.
Everybody understand the motion?
Roll call, please.
All right, roll call's been requested.
This is to refer to committee, to another committee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you have five in favor, five opposed, two absent.
All right. So it fails? So we're back to the motion to amend? All right. Would you like a roll call on this as well?
Can I ask if, if Councilwoman Seaman has removed her, she wanted to remove C?
Yeah, I would, or let's take out the however sentence, because I do think there might be some time when we would actually issue permits for things, so.
Take out however where?
The however, the permanent is applied for and issued. I don't know, I, maybe it's, it's fine as, as it is.
Take, take out the, you're, you have a motion to amend my, this amendment?
Yeah.
To take out C?
I don't know if we need to take out all of C, I was just thinking that maybe we could remove the however clause, since it sort of negates the first thing, and I would want us to have the ability to restrict if we do, do permitting for events, so.
Okay, I, I, okay, my, my comment on that, I said, our county attorney wrote it up this way, and I'd ask either just keep it the way it is, or take it out the whole, take out all of it, I don't like.
Then I, I would withdraw, and we'll just keep it the way it is.
Okay, you want to leave it in?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so the amendment of mine would be to all the red, and take out Section 3, the violation.
All right. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment? Correct? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it for the amendment to the amendment. All right, now we have the.
No, I think we're at the.
We're, we're actually at it now for, for passing the ordinance.
That's correct. No, a motion's on the floor yet for that, but yes.
Right, so I entertain a motion?
I'm in motion.
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been called.
Mr. Chairman, you have five in favor, five opposed, two absent.
So the item fails? We'll move on to Item C, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions. Counselor Bradley?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend the Granville County Stormwater Management Ordinance to implement requirements and procedures in compliance with federal or state regulations pursuant to the county NPDES permits.
All right, any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Collins?
I've been reviewing this since the meeting a couple, maybe three weeks ago. One of the committees, the lady come in, there's all the MS4, the NPDES, and all this stuff, and, excuse me, and the reason I'm, I'm still, I'm out on it is because I've gone through this, and, and I know it's not that many pages, like 52, I believe, but there's a lot of changes in there that I really don't understand, and I'm trying to get clarification, and one of them is to have a fee in lieu of stormwater runoff. Can you help me with that, Mr. Attorney?
I'm afraid that my database is not good enough for that tonight. I don't, I just don't have that front of mind.
Okay, forgive me, yes, sir, I get it, okay. Okay, so my question is, I'm trying to understand that, and then the, it gives the director pretty much appeal process to the changes of the stormwater runoff. Now, I've got three residents in my district, as a result of development that was approved, that has runoff water, that are flooding their yard, is getting to the water table, the water is popping up like a geyser in three different spots in their backyard, and so when I'm over there in the last rain we had, it was just popping up like whack-a-mole. I'd go and put my foot on one hole, it'd pop up in another. The grass is gone, and then the water from her house, once I block it, runs to the other neighbor's house and goes under the crawl space. They have since two years now removed the insulation from under their house. And what I'm saying that for is because the county was out there, and a couple inspectors, they came out, and my predecessor did some action on that, where he made them increase the size of the berm for the retaining pond. That said, as I'm out there, the inspectors told them, well, what can we do about this runoff water that's destroying my yard and my neighbor's crawl space? He said, you need to build a five-foot berm around your property. You know what? I told them to sue the county, because there's nothing they can do, because that inspector told them they followed all the rules of that development. Then they need to do a lawsuit against the county who approved that development and everything that's going on. And I know that's probably not the right thing to say, but their house is ruined now, and their property value has gone down. You know how old they are? Seventy-eight and eighty-one. Where's their right? And this regulation modification deals directly with that. So it's not a big deal to many of you, it's not a big deal to those that are not in my district, but it's the world to those seven people in that house, and that's their world. So I'm going to make a motion, we send this back to the committee, and look over, and further time for study.
Counselor Collins, can I ask, just for my information, in, in this, what is it specifically that, that is the concern?
There's no punitive action for runoff water, and it gives one individual, a director, whom that may be, doesn't clarify the override or veto power of that stipulation.
All right.
And, I'm sorry, Chair, and then a fee in lieu of runoff water. What?
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, is, which committee did this come from?
It came out of Riplo, I mean, Roads Infrastructure and Public.
Is there anything time-sensitive that would prevent this from going back to committee for this discussion?
I'd need to check with Hesh on that.
Okay. Is that good, is that okay? Okay, so, so we can send this back to committee, and Counselor Collins could add these questions so we could discuss, and figure out if there's something we need to add to it, or leave the same? I'll entertain that motion, if somebody would like to make it.
I'll make a motion that goes back to infrastructure.
Okay. All right. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Move on to Item D, Animal Control Ordinance Amendment. Counselor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend Chapter, Chapter 4 of the Granville County Code, ordinance regulating animal care in Granville County. Mr. Chairman, I have amendment, and also have a motion after the amendment.
All right.
I moved to amend the ordinance to reflect the changed, changes outlined in the red-lined version included in the agenda package. Also, I'll make a motion to hold this item until a public hearing, it's, which is scheduled May 6th.
All right, so we have two motions. First motion is to amend with the red line. Does everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have the motion to hold until the public hearing?
Oh, okay, gotcha.
All right, everybody understand?
Can't we pass it without, and then just, we'll start with third reading?
I think typically, they, they want to respect, respect the right of the citizens to be able to speak out, so they want to hold before third reading, because typically that, that decision's pretty close to made at that point.
I, the only thing I would argue is that y'all have been there, you've been there for every one of these, do you feel like you need to hear anything else about this issue? I feel like these guys have just worked for a year and a half, staff worked, every stone's been unturned on this thing. Can we just go ahead and pass it tonight? We'll have, we'll still have our public, but come on, man.
Well, to be honest, I was doing it kind of based off conversation I had with several constituents, where they were wanting more time to speak, so I was trying to give more opportunity for the public to have their voice heard before we, we voted any farther, that was all.
Mr. Chair, do you happen to know if they were in favor or in opposition of it?
They were in favor. They just wanted more time to speak on the issue.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just kind of like, oh, we should just pass it, but.
Well, I actually think we have to have one, is that clarification, please?
What, but haven't we many times in the past done the second reading vote, and then had the?
Yeah, and I think we got a lot of pushback, because we were having public hearings at third reading, and there was no opportunity for amendment at third reading, so, and according to our rules, if we want to amend at third reading, you have to have it in writing, which is impossible to do. If the public speaks and they want us to change something, we don't have a mechanism for that. So I, I, I mean, I'm appreciative, and I'm certainly in favor, but I would also be more in favor of making sure that we follow our rules and protocols, and also to, again, to your point, give the people an opportunity to speak, and then move forward. So the motion that holds, I guess, is on the floor and has to be voted on before we move on.
Oh, go ahead, Mr..
Dr. Phan?
I was just answering correctly.
Oh, sorry.
Say that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I, I know we, and Madam, Ms. Seaman's correct, we used to get clobbered for having hearings at third reading. These folks, they come in tirelessly, and, I mean, we've given them, everybody's on board with what we're trying to do. I certainly don't want to set a precedent, because I don't want to go back to sliding the third reading and then we get beat up again. But this has gone on for so long, and we've been very patient, and, and very tolerant of us, this is be a one-off, and, and me agreeing with Shaw twice in the same night, definitely a one-off. Got to hear from you. So let's, I would say let's just do it tonight with the understanding that we'll get beat up if we start doing it on a regular basis, but let's just do it as a one-off, because they have been very faithful, and very patient.
Counselor Bradley? Counselor Bradley, and how come to?
I, I really don't have a problem with that, but I have a amendment, since it was going to be put on to public, which I assumed it was, so I would need, be able to make amendment on the third reading, and it's just the, the motion, so I can make amendment on the third. And it's just the motion so I can make amendment on the third reading. And it's a minor amendment, but it's a little stiffer penalties for barking.
Yeah.
And he can do that at third, just we have to suspend the rules to allow for amendment.
No, no, he makes the motion tonight.
He's just making the motion now.
Okay.
We're good.
I'd like to make that motion to be able to amend at third reading.
Okay, so we'll need to?
Let's vote on that one first.
Now, we already have the motion to?
He could withdraw his motion to hold and then we could take up the motion to amend at third.
All right, so who needs to withdraw?
Hold motion.
I'll draw my hold motion.
All right, now would you like to make your amendment?
I'd like to be able to make amendments on third reading.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then just a motion to approve the amendment.
All right. All in favor of approval of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinances at?
I'm sorry, that was for the amendment part?
No, we voted on both.
We voted on the ordinance.
My wife keeps telling me I need hearing aids, I think.
Next, we will move on to ordinances at first reading. Counsel Bradley.
I present for first reading zoning docket CZ-2025-22 through CZ-2025 to 027.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please?
No action, we're just referring, it's first reading.
We'll refer this to Plan and Development Committee. Next, we will move on to Greenville County zoning ordinance text amendment, Article Eight, Section Eight, Five, Eight. Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading an ordinance to amend Article Eight, Section Eight, Five Point Eight, ESD PM Environmental Sensitive District, Paris Mountain, Special Division of Greenville County Ordinance.
All right, thank you, and we will refer this to Plan and Development Committee. Have Greenville County Library Budget Millage Request, Counselor Collins.
Thank you. Item 11C, Greenville County Library Budget Millage Request. I present for first reading an ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds for the Greenville County Library System for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, and to authorize the annual edvalorm property tax millage for library purposes.
All right, thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. Next, we have Greenville County Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing. Counsel Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the council in KCI, I present for the first reading an ordinance to delete Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and to prohibit new cluster developments in Greenville County. I request this ordinance be referred to the Planning and Development Committee.
We'll refer that to Plan and Development Committee. Next, we will move to committee reports, committee of the whole. Counsel Bradley.
Refer this to pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to approve the funding plan for the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Grant.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the committee, I move to appoint the following. Patricia Edwards, Christopher Griffin, Ernie Hamilton, Beth Messick, John Redmond and Herman Roberts, Jr., to fill six vacancies on the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission. And I move to appoint Clifton Dyer, Barry Formanak and Dante Russo to fill three vacancies on the Arena District, Cedric Brown and Stephen Knapp to fill two vacancies on the Boiling Springs Fire District, Stephen Jones to fill one vacancy on the Construction Board of Appeals, John Long III, Timothy Morgan and Charles Piesor to fill five vacancies, sorry, three vacancies on the Greenville Area Development Corporation, Malik Minsky, William McCauley III, James O'Connor, Stephen Parks, David Snodgrass and Catherine Taylor to fill six vacancies on the Greenville County Historic and Natural Resources Trust, Megan Barp to fill one vacancy on the Greenville Technical College Area Commission, Wettie Lawson to fill one vacancy on the Human Relations Commission, Gebra Alvarado, Emily Dimsky and Emily Dimsky to fill two vacancies on the Parks Recreation and Tourism Advisory Board, Deborah Manning, Kenneth Maticovic and William Parham to fill three vacancies on the Planning Commission, Jandra Wilson to fill one vacancy on the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, Henry McCullough to fill one vacancy on the South Carolina Technology and Aviation Center Board, Lisa Brayswell to fill one vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Ken McIntyre and Savannah Porter to fill two vacancies on the Buxton Special Tax District Commission, Alexander Roy to fill one vacancy on the Shannon Clear Community Commission, Jessica Sarita to fill one of two vacancies on the Devinger Point Special Tax District, and Shannon Spurrier to fill one of three vacancies on the Linkside Special Tax District.
Now, I see why you had you read it. All right, all in favor of the motion of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more.
Yes, ma'am.
So far. On behalf of the committee, I move to open a one-month special application for the Construction Board of Appeals.
All right, everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And while we're here, I want to go ahead and make the announcement that the two GADC member chair selections are Mr. Dan Rundell and Mr. Stephen Piper. We'll move on to public comments. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, we have four speakers. The first is Inez Morris. Her topic is Greenlink.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Inez Morris and I live in the West Greenville neighborhood. And I'm here to encourage you as a county council to fund, continue to fund Greenlink. It's a vital part of our community and it needs to be funded for better service. Greenville is a great city, it's a vibrant city, but we have got to do a better job with our transit. Transit is important because people needed to get to work, to doctor's appointments, to visit friends, different things in the community, and we need 30-minute service. A prime example of our bus service is, I have a car, but I took my grandkids to the Children's Museum during spring break. And we took the bus downtown. Coming back, we couldn't figure out where the sign was to get back on the bus to go back downtown to catch our connecting bus back to West Greenville. We were able to get on the bus and go back around and come back, but that bus was late getting to the terminal. Therefore, we missed our bus and had to wait a whole hour for another bus. So it's incredibly important that we make sure that we're serving our community. And I'm just one person. I mean, I've seen people standing there, they've missed the bus because they don't connect anymore, they don't wait for the next bus to come in. Once that bus is there, they are ready to leave, they pull out on time. If that bus is five minutes or 10 minutes late, they miss their connecting bus. And that's another whole hour you have to wait for another bus to come. So please, please, county council, help us to continue to make our city a good city to live in. We're in the news, we're on the national news about everything else, but we're not on the news about our transit system. And we need to be on the news about our transit system to make sure that we are serving the people that need to get to jobs, to hospitals, to doctor's appointments, all those things that are so vital and important for life. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Margaret McGinty. Her topic is Greenlink.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Margaret McGinnity. I live at 104 Mason Street here in Greenville in the Brandon neighborhood. I am back, like Ms. Morris, to continue to plea for funding for Greenlink. I've heard that one of the objections to funding Greenlink is that nobody uses it. That is, not enough people ride the bus to warrant spending taxpayer money on supporting it. I would like to share two thoughts about that. The first is, when someone says, nobody rides the bus, I wonder if what they really mean is only poor people ride the bus. And by substituting the word nobody for poor people, they're trying to make themselves and others believe that they are not harming anyone when they reduce or remove a service that people do in fact use and depend on. Maybe this is how, when it comes to cutting funding, the path of least resistance so frequently turns out to run through the least fortunate sectors of our population. The second thought I'd like to share is, rather than diminish or dispose of Greenlink because of low ridership, why don't you just increase ridership? How do you do this? By making Greenlink a viable mode of transportation for everyone, not just for those who may have no other option. Make public transit the travel mode of choice, not of last resort. Of course, that's easier said than done. It involves demographic studies, route planning, scheduling, driver training and multiple other tasks of operating and expanding a public transportation system. But guess what? Greenlink knows how to do all of this already. So you see, the hard part is done. All Greenlink needs is your support. Let me close with an illustration. I like bicycling and say I'd like more people to ride bikes. So I'm going to give everyone bicycles, but I don't put any air in the tires of these bicycles. And because there's no air in the tires, nobody, or only the most desperate, rides the bikes. And when I see that nobody is riding the bikes, I take all the bikes back. But if what I wanted was for more people to ride bikes, wouldn't it have made more sense for me to just put air in the tires? You have the bike, it's called Greenlink. All it needs is for you to put air in its tires. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Audrey Pazin. Her topic is Point Set Park Agreement.
I have to stand here so that everyone can hear me in the microphone. We have a problem with the microphones. We can't hear Dr. Fant very often also. Maybe someone can fix that. It's a strange way to have to stand, but, okay, here we go. The fix is in, right? TR gets whatever it wants. Is that how this works? Like China could negotiate a tariff with the United States and we're going to go for that, right? Well, that's what we have here, folks. We were very busy with the lame duck council last year. So they pushed a zillion felos through the last few months they were in office. They pushed the UDO, they passed the sewer boundary, Metro Sewer Boundary Extension, they did all this stuff. And I apologize, I couldn't follow every single thing that went on on the agenda. So I missed this agreement that Travelers Rest provided and that this council adopted after three readings in December 2024. It's the key to Paris Mountain, TR's taking it over. Thanks, guys. You got to fix this problem and you can. The folks in the back don't know what I'm talking about, but there was a very nice park, it's called Point Set Park, it belongs to Greenville County, and you gave it away to TR for nothing in return. You want to have contiguity for annexation on Paris Mountain? Do that crap. Whose good idea was that to approve this thing? Ridiculous, ridiculous. Now, I'm thinking about the lawsuit that can fix the problem, but I hope you don't make me file that because you have a solution that you can adopt, and I'm going to tell you what it is. You look at Mason's Rules and you find there's one called Motion to Bring Again Before the Body a Matter That Was Previously Decided. And so you have that motion and you bring this agreement back and you vote to rescind it. And the reason you should vote to rescind it is that's unlawful. It's going to lead to a map amendment and the state law, I heard a lot about state law, thanks, Counsel Shaw, for talking about state law, we have to follow it. State law and the Enabling, Planning Enabling Act tells us how to amend a map, a zoning map. Notice in the paper, opportunity to be heard, Planning Commission gets the question. And if it is then recommended, council can adopt it. None of that happened, but this agreement will create a map amendment without any due process. You don't like that idea. I know you don't like that idea. You got stuck with someone's bad activity. You have to fix this problem and you can. You have a procedural mechanism, bring it back, rescind it, and don't make TR the owner of Paris Mountain.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin.
The last speaker is James Sheets. His topic is wildfire management.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Jim Sheets, 136 Old Altamont Ridge Road, Stone Ridge on Paris Mountain. I wore my red shirt tonight so you could save Paris Mountain. Not for the purpose of the red shirt, but for the purpose preventing wildfire. We've had disasters on Table Rock and Pinnacle. 2022, you guys made this document, not you guys, your predecessors, and that's Paris Mountain Wildfire Mitigation Plan. Great document, really good document. I commend you for having it done then, but now you got to update it. It really is out of date and it was just three years old. So if you look at the details, there are seven major sections, all of them very good sections, but each category in those sections were prioritized and weighted, but they're already out of date. There's no question that the infrastructure losses are way understated, as is the mitigation cost, way understated. So I think you need to really look at it. In addition to that, there are several commitments and a timetable for things to get done. I haven't seen any indication they've been done. There's nothing posted on the website, not there at all. So what I'd like you to do is commit to updating this plan, save Paris Mountain from a wildfire. Two major issues. One is, one is fuel. Now, the county has spent a ton of money picking up fuel along the highways, along the byways, but the real fuel is still in Paris Mountain State Park, still in private woods on Paris Mountain. Lots of fuel there, we got to take care of it. The other thing that needs to be done is fire breaks, and the plan has a technique to do that. I haven't seen a fire break, so we really need to go back and look at that to prevent a major fire on Paris Mountain. The only other thing I'd like to say is, just by the way, Stone Ridge is the only residence community in Greenville County that is a fire-wisest community. We got that designation in December of last year, so my hat's off to my fellow Stone Ridge people here. It was worthwhile. You look at your total fireproofing of your landscape and you can get certified, so we did it. But I want you to do the update on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to administrator's report.
Yeah, I just have a couple small things just to update council on. One of them, as you walk in, you probably see them working right outside the walkway there, right before you hit the edge of the building. That's where the handicap parking, there'll be six spots there, and a drop-off area. So that construction's now well underway and hopefully it'll be complete in the next 30 to 45 days. And you probably saw a crane on the other side of the building, that's lifting up all the materials and everything for them to complete the PTFE that's being replaced between the two buildings. That was not done properly when the building was originally constructed, so the contractors are actually finishing that up as we speak. So hopefully we'll be done with those two parts of the project and then it'll just be the private development going on from this point forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cornell, would it be possible for you to ask Ms. James to send us all a copy of the original budget that she submitted?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have requesting motions by council members. Counsel Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that council refer consideration of the pending grant application for the 2025 TAP grant for the West Greenville Shared Youth Path to the Committee of the Whole pursuant to Council Rule 5B.
All right.
Which one is that?
Any conversation on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Any other council members wish to share during this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Fant?
Got one quick item, two things. I know we've kind of talked about it, but until we get some closer parking, these seniors are laying me out, knock that door, move it out of here. Can we get somebody to put a golf cart, take seniors back? Until we can get closer parking, that's the limit. But at work, maybe.
It'll cost some money to bring in some people. We don't have people sitting here driving a golf cart. We do provide wheelchairs. Some of the security personnel have been very good about leaving their posts and taking people out there. I've taken people out there by wheelchair, so it's been few and far between that people have not been able to do it. And actually, we've measured from the garage to here is not any further than it was in the old facility. And if you got in the wrong door in the old facility, you'd have a quarter of a mile to go to the other end of the building. So it's kind of a catch-22. We're doing what we can and we have taken a golf cart out there for people. They can call us from out in the garage and we'll come get them.
Okay. The second thing, Mr. Chairman, I want to piggyback off what Ms. Seaman did. I am really, really frustrated with the library and the folks trying to live off what they can do. Work all day. That's just... So I would like, we need a copy of whatever Ms. James' original budget, and I want to offer that as amendment at the next meeting. Y'all just, it's cute to have these people working in poverty like that. That's just wrong. That's just wrong. So I'd like to, I'm just trying to offer that amendment to what the original budget was.
Okay. Anybody else? Dr. Shaw?
I did, I mean, I echo the same thing. We've had that discussion about the low pay at the animal control. If it's something we need to do, maybe to adjust the highs and the lows of what incomes are. Or at least it's a constant issue from our constituents saying, the people at the top are making too much, the people at the bottom are not making a living wage. And that's something, that leads to my bigger question is, it's April 15th now, can you let us, give us any kind of roadmap about when we get a proposed budget to start? I mean, that should be our first priority, figuring out. And I'm not blaming or saying anything, I just like, I don't have any inkling of when we should, when we're getting your proposal.
Well, Mr. Shaw, as you know, I guess you've been through, what, six, or three budgets so far. Normally, they come at the end of May.
End of May?
End of May, generally. We're trying to get it to you much quicker so that you have more time to get up to speed on what's in the budget and everything, and there's a number of new individuals here. So that's what we're working on.
If I can, real quick, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, and I understand everybody's wanting a living wage, and I got no problem with that. I mean, I get it. But you know, maybe we just need a bottom-up recalculation or reshuffle. I'm all for that. You know, let's shake the top down and distribute. If you want to distribute wealth, let's do it. I'm all for it. Shake them up from the top, let everybody catch what they can on the way down.
Any else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it? Be careful going home, everybody.